Tuesday, September 19th, 3 o'clock. We will have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams.
Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this time that you allowed us to come to this place for this business meeting. Lord, we are reminded of your word. It says in Titus 2:14, "He gave himself for us, to redeem us from all wickedness, and to purify for himself a people that are his very own, eager to do what is good." Lord, teach us to do those things that are good for those we serve. We thank you, Lord God, for those who are humble servants. We ask you, Lord God, to direct our minds and our thoughts in this meeting today to do the things that bring glory and praise to your name. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please, Father, and Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Free. Accent. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Council, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comment on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by President Pro Tem barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked at a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. The city council has appointed city marshals as sergeant-at-arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, and just real quick, following the regular council meeting today, we'll have a budget workshop on the 2024 budget. We'll take about a five-minute break after this meeting and go into that, so we encourage you to stay. All right, we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2023, regular council meeting and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second. So we've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comments? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
West Marriott Sobolai 4330 Panther Drive, Suite 212. Good afternoon, Mr. President. A motion needs to be made to amend the minutes of the September 5th meeting. On September 5th, this council voted 5-2 to give Charles Jacobs the authority to pursue legal action against the registrar of voters. I made the case that this action was a waste of time, and I reiterated, instead of taking action, this council was again doing everything but its obligation under the city charter. For the third time in four meetings, I was interrupted during my comments. At no point did I shout or use obscene language. However, in the minutes recorded for the September 5th meeting, my comments were deemed disruptive. The use of this language causes me to pause and question if this body understands the definition of the word disruptive. As defined by the Oxford Dictionary, disruption is a disturbance or a problem which interrupts an event, activity, or process. On August 1st, August 15th, and most recently on September 5th, I have been interrupted while reading my prepared comments. These comments were not boisterous, slanderous, or impertinent; however, they were criticisms of council practices and proposed courses of actions. The only disruptive actions on September 5th were by the repeated interruptions by Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Free. Had these councilmembers held their tongue and accepted the public criticism offered by this speaker, then I would have finished my comments and departed in about three minutes. However, having to stop and address the interruptions and defend my constitutional right to question, petition, and comment on government affairs repeatedly caused a disturbance which interrupted my planned activity. Again, by definition, the only disruption on September 5th was caused by Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Free, and I demand the minutes be amended to reflect that it's not disruptive to calmly speak and challenge the actions of this council. I find the repeated and flagrant violations of the city charter, the backroom meetings caught on tape, and the complete disregard for the public certified petition to be far more disruptive than the statements that I made. Lastly, I would like to close with the final clarification on the subject matter that seems to be the fulcrum on which free speech hinges in these chambers. Every time I mention this fact, I am interrupted by this council and called a liar by Mr. Jacobs. It's time to make it abundantly clear for everyone in this room and everyone watching these proceedings in posterity, one thing. On July 18th, Mr. Jacobs stated that his opinion on term limits would be recommend a second opinion from an outside counsel who is out of town and unconnected to anyone in the city. That attorney was Katie Bell, and she is, in fact, heavily connected to the city of Bojor. That statement by Mr. Jacobs was 100% false when he said it. Katie Bell has previously represented the city and the MPC 11 years ago, personally billing Bojor City $684,865. Her law firm, Keene Miller, is still regularly contracted by the city and has been paid thousands of dollars even into 2023. Ms. Bell personally appeared with Councilman Montgomery in a deposition defending him and making objections on his behalf. To say that Katie Bell is unconnected to the city or anyone in the city is an outright lie, and unlike Mr. Jacobs, I can prove everything I just said. If the city attorney has lied to the council and to the public about the conflict of interest with Ms. Bell and Katie Bell -- and I'll finish this momentarily.
Wrap it up.
If he's lied about Katie Bell and her opinion formed the basis for the action of this council pertaining to term limits, how can we trust anything that is produced by this body? Dissent is not disruption, and disagreement is not a disturbance. Mr. President, please rein in your colleagues and amend the minutes. Do not approve these minutes as written. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any comment from the council? If there's no other comments, then please cast your vote.
Question carries.
We will need a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any public comment on today's agenda? From the council? Please cast your vote.
Question carries.
Uh, bids?
Witness opening of sealed bids for P23-12 Tinsley Park dugout and backstop improvements.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. So the first bid we're opening today is P2312 for the Tinsley Park dugout and backstop netting replacement. The engineer's estimate on this project, $725,000. There was one addendum, which included the pre-bid attendees and some changes and clarifications to the bids and planned specs. There are also three alternates on this. The first bid is from Boggs and Pool Contracting. They do have their bid bond. Their base bid is $951,900. Alternate number one, $128,075.00. Alternate number two is $52,050.520.00. And alternate number three is $21,300.
Twenty-one thousand, three hundred?
Yes. Okay, the second bid is from Delta Specialty Contractors. They also have their bid bond. I'm sorry, and both did acknowledge the addenda. The base bid for Delta Specialties is $885,700. Alternate number one is $222,310. Alternate number two is $233,000. And alternate number three is $30,000. The third bid is from McKenna's Brothers Construction. They did acknowledge the addenda, and they have their bid bond. The base bid is for $960,000. Alternate number one is $124,080. That's 124,080.00. Alternate number two is $46,000. And alternate number three is $28,000. I ask that you acknowledge the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Cast your vote.
Question carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for P23-06 Bojor City Water Main Improvements Water Loops.
Okay, the second bid is for the water main improvements and water loops. Engineer's estimate on this project is $660,000. There was one addendum, which included the sign-in sheet from the pre-bid and responses with questions and answers. The first bid is from Pulli Construction. Their base bid. This does show two alternates. They have a base bid of $1,219,000. They did acknowledge addendum number one. Alternate number one, $97,000. Alternate number two, $111,000. Everybody good?
Do Pulli have their bid bond, or they got a check?
They did have their bid bond.
And what was that first amount? One million?
A million, two nineteen. Okay, the second bid is from Wicker Construction. They acknowledged the addendum, and they do have their bid bond. The base bid is for $1,177,332.25. Alternate number one is $111,743.50. Alternate number two is $156,702. I ask that you acknowledge the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by the Chair. Oh, Mr. Montgomery, sir. Okay. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? Please cast your vote.
Question carries. I'm trying to see why it didn't pop up.
Okay, the last bid today?
Is Tinsley ditch improvements, phase two, bid number P23-13.
Okay, the engineer's estimate for this project is $270,000. There were two addenda. The first included the legal notice to bidders, which was inadvertently left out of the bid package. The second included the pre-bid attendees and questions and answers for the project.
Oh yeah, what did you say the engineer's estimate was?
Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand.
We got three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, six-hundred on our sheet.
You may check your sheets, too. Last one didn't have no alternates on our bid sheets.
Apologize.
Last one didn't have no alternates on our bid sheets either.
No, it didn't. I looked back through the bid form, and that was my mistake about putting those on there. I apologize.
Just letting you know, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes, totally. We instantly do. Do you have your?
I don't have my paper.
Mr. Russianback, do you know what the bid was, estimate on this one?
Do you know what your estimate is? I do not have that with me. I apologize. I know that we do have an ordinance that covers, that we added in, but this particular portion, I had originally as two-hundred-and-seventy. It may have changed since I originally looked at the number.
Can, Ms., can we move this, opening of this bid to the end of the meeting so we can get that accurate information before we open the bids?
Certainly.
Okay, we'll come back to it at the end of the meeting.
All right.
All right.
Public hearings, actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance to approve, report a change order number 10 for the LTRI Louisiana Technology Research Institute Bojor with an increase in project cost of $87,170.17 and to declare the project complete. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Darby. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 82 of 2023 that declared an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to restore a collapsed sewer main along Barretot Lane, adding an additional $50,000 to the project to come from sewer capital and contingency funds. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for on-premise consumption of high and low content alcohol at an event center. Seem Designs LLC located at 1605 Benton Road, Suites BNC, Bojor City, Louisiana. First and final reading, and favorable by MPC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public discussion? Any discussion from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use on attractive land located at B2, attractive land zone B2, limited business located at 1605 Benton Road, Suites BNC, Bojor City, Louisiana for a private event center. First and final reading, and it's favorable by MPC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accounts clerk, three, due to a resignation in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution certifying off-system bridge program compliance for 2023, 2024 for the city of Bojor City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by the Chair. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bojor City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the city of Bojor City, make an application to the state bond commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by the Chair. Is there any public comment?
Davy Crockett, David Crockett, 653 Dumeine Drive, Bojor City, Louisiana. Mr. President, thank you for letting me speak. Last council meeting was about change through term limits. It's about what the whole meeting encompassed. The events before, during, and after the meeting are the exact reason that Bojor City is waking up to the need for term limits. Bojor City Council is now alleged to have committed up to three open meeting violations, and I have a copy for anybody who wants it. Those are related to public interest in this event and an attempt possibly to dampen that interest. I have great respect for the councilmen who are joining our efforts, and Mayor, thank you for putting this on the agenda, but also for the person who recorded the meeting that went on in council chambers and then shared it, because that's what's necessary to hold democracy to the test. The real test for our council is how will you react to the growing pressure from the public that wants term limits now for the existing councilmen who've served many, many terms? Mr. President, I served in the Air Force for 30 years because I believe in free speech. I carried my pocket Constitution on each and every combat mission. I read it during the arduous 19 to 20-hour combat missions. I believe in democracy. But what you're seeing is that the voters that don't fly combat missions, that they see now, and you should see, that your citizens want free and open debate. Any attempt to restrict our comment periods by elected and unelected officials will be opposed by the public. This community and this entire parish wants term limits now. Since the last meeting, the Attorney General agreed with our position in his September 8th letter. He said, "Once a petition is tendered by the registrar, she is required to certify the petitions pursuant to LARS 183D," which involves ensuring that the person who signed the petition are registered electors in the jurisdiction. Her three criteria to certify the signature was, one, a fixed signature and address in which they are registered, verify the signature, and that the name appears on the registrar's roll of folders. A very simple process. It seems like, though, that this council wants to impose limits that are not in a very clear, clearly represented in the city charter, what the petition requires. As we have said, the registrar fulfilled her statutory responsibilities, and she has no authority to decertify the petition. What is sad to say is that the petition, or whether we didn't even do a petition, you could vote today to put the two propositions on the ballot, but you continue to oppose it. It warrants repeating. Bojor City is continuing to put robots in front of our petition. I have updates on the petition. I'll cut it off now because I don't want to be accused of going over my time.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. West Marriott Sobolai 4330 Panther Drive. Our journey for term limits in Bojor City has been long and arduous, but it's a journey fueled by the unwavering belief that the power in our democracy, democracy should ultimately rest with the people. The Attorney General has spoken. Just like Mr. Crockett just said, the registrar of voters held her ground, and it's time for this council to heed the call of the law and the will of the people. On September 5th, this council made a decision that sought to delay the inevitable, a decision that attempted to circumvent the democratic process by asking the registrar of voters to decertify the term limits petition. We all know this was nothing but a stall tactic, an attempt to avoid taking action on an issue that has gained overwhelming support from the citizens of Bojor City. Today, Bojor City requires this of you. No more delay, no more stalling. We have a clear path forward, one that aligns with the principles of democracy and respects the voices of your constituents. Mayor Tommy Chandler has once again placed a term limits item on the agenda, calling for a referendum to let the people decide. This is not a request. It's a demand from the people, a demand that can no longer be ignored. The citizens of Bojor City spoke loudly and clearly. 2,977 certified signatures sent a resounding message. They want term limits, and they want them now. It's not a political ploy. It's a call for accountability, transparency, and a chance to breathe new life into our local government. We see the same mistakes over and over again, and the citizens are demanding change. The Attorney General made it abundantly clear that you cannot rely on the registrar of voters decertifying the petition as an excuse to take no action. The law is clear, and our democratic principles are unwavering. The term limits petition is valid, it's certified, and it's ready for action. Last month, I affirmed to this council, there is no possible future in which a registrar would decertify her petition. And moments ago, I laid out the case that the legal guidance of Mr. Jacobs was untrustworthy at best and blatantly dishonest at worst. Stop relying on bad legal advice to stall the will of the voters. Mr. President, members of the city council, it's time to act. It's time to put term limits to the ballots, and it's time to let the people have their say. Any further delay will be seen as a front to democracy itself, and it's likely to invite more unwanted attention to Bojor City instead of the positive press that a community as great as ours deserves. Please stop making a mockery of the legal process and insulting the intelligence of your constituents. Will you stand on the side of democracy, transparency, or accountability, or will you now continue on the current course of delay and illegal obstruction? Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Alice Boyer. I live at 5041 Highway 80 in Haughton. I started observing this council about two-plus years ago, and it piqued my interest when I sat there and heard someone in this council actually threaten someone's wife, basically, you know, one of the citizens. And since then, there's been a lot of, you know, grandstanding and unethical behavior. A simply violated, you know, a simply worded charter has been violated by y'all. And the appointed council. There's open, the runaround that we get in open meetings to allow us to speak is just, you know, it's a disgrace. And this petition was put forth, you know, with good intentions, you know, for the good and the well-being of Bojor City. It had no ill intent whenever this was put to y'all. And y'all keep refusing to put the item on the agenda. You know, using grain of salt, lawfare, to try and postpone, you know, what is wanted. And the secret collusion that took place, that was kind of like a wow moment, too. You know, y'all have violated Title 18, 241, 242, 245. I'm sure it's already been brought up. I have a copy here if y'all need to refresh your memories on this. And I happened to come across this organization chart that Heard, McElroy, and Vestal put out, your certified public accountants. I don't know if y'all want to decertify that also, but I want to say that nobody on this DS right here is at the top of this organization chart. Nobody. Who's at the top? Unless y'all are not familiar, but it says citizens are at the top of this organization chart. And somehow, we're the ones being put down for what we want. Seems to be there's a self-serving lack of moral conscience up here. You know, y'all have been given the privilege to, you know, benefit a multitude of people, but that doesn't seem to be what is occurring. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any comment from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would just ask that today, we vote and move this forward. We're going on months now with this. The citizens have spoken. They continue to speak. We're sitting in these seats because of the citizens that we represent. They're not going to decertify the petition. That's what everything is about. The Attorney General has given his opinion on it, wavered in. I'm just, it's time to move on. We've got so much more stuff to do in the city of Bojor. So many more things to spend money on in the city of Bojor that are for the goodwill of the people that we need to move on past this and get on down the road and let the citizens have their vote.
Is there any other comment? Is there any other comment?
I do have a question for Mr. Jacobs. I guess it was two weeks ago, we voted five to two for not only asking Ms. Agee to decertify, but also for a declaratory judgment. Given the results of her legal counsel responding, is the city planning on moving forward with that legal action?
I am in the process of drafting the petition for declaratory judgment. It should be ready in approximately ten days to two weeks to be filed, as per the resolution passed at the prior meeting by the city council.
So, and we don't have to hire any outside, you're handling that yourself?
I am.
I would, I would agree with Mr. Hammond. So, is there any other comment? Mayor Chandler?
I just think the voice of the, of the citizens need to be heard, and like, like, Ryan said, we're in here because they voted us here. They could, they could vote either way. We don't know which way they're going to vote. I mean, if, they can vote for, for us not to have term limits, and they can vote for. I just wanted to say that Attorney General did decertify, did say they couldn't decertify the petition, and then just gonna, uh, just give it to the citizens, let them make their mind up, is what I think.
If there's, if there's no other comment, council, just cast your vote.
Mr. Jacobs, do you concur with that? It's a three-three vote.
I'm sorry?
It's a three-three vote. Parade permit fee waiver, Bossier High School homecoming parade, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Williams. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? There's none, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Parade permit fee waiver for Veterans for Veterans, November eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Maggio. Is there any public comment? Any comment from the council? There's none, please cast your vote. All right, reports?
Carries.
Mr. President, as I told you before the meeting, I got, be somewhere in about five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you for being here, Mr. Williams.
Do you want to go back to the bids? Are they?
Oh, yes, they s- Yeah, they go back to the bid.
Here they come, they're walking in the door now.
Y'all have it?
All right, we're ready for y'all. Yep.
Okay, Brooke is going to hand out the paperwork, and the explanation is, the original estimate that is on your form was pulled from the original probable cost, the opinion of probable construction cost, which was before they finished with the plans. So that was on us, that was original, and it was pulled from the bid request where we make sure we have enough in the budget before we bring it to you. The actual engineer's estimate, as indicated in question number four, they're asking for the date and the price. On the addendum number two, I believe it is, addendum number two, question four, they asked the estimate, and it is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Okay. Now we'll open the bids. And this is for the Tinsley ditch improvements, phase two. The first estimate is from Three Gen Construction LLC. They have their bid bond, and they did acknowledge both addenda. Their bid is for two hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars. Second bed, bid is from Beatty Logging, Beatty Logging. Uh, they did acknowledge both addenda, and they do have their bid bond. Their bid is for one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred eight dollars and fifty cents. That's one seven four five zero eight. Yes, and fifty cents. Next bid is from CWNW Contractors. They acknowledged both addenda and have included the bid bond. Their bid is for three hundred thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. That's three zero zero four eight four point three one. The next bid is from ERS Incorporated. They acknowledged both addenda, and they do have their bid bond. Their bid is for four hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. And the last bid is from Pulli Construction. They do have their bid bond, they did acknowledge both addenda, and their bid is for two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by the chair. Is there any public comment? Comment from the council?
Uh, just for, President, I mean, I'll just ask that we take all these bids under advisement? Have that noted?
So you change any motion?
No. No, well, yeah, that we just take these under advisement.
I'll second that as well. All right. Ready? Yep, please cast your vote.
Has everyone's popped up? I'm still waiting on Mr. Smith, Mr. Hammond.
It's not on my screen, but I'm a yay.
Okay, you're a yay. Mr. Hammond?
I'm a yay. Nothing popped up.
Mr. Darby?
Yay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now reports.
Ben Rochenbach, Engineering Department, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, council.
Good morning.
Okay, great. Not a whole lot has changed, uh, since our last meeting, but I'll go through the list here briefly. Similar to last month, we have seventy-three million in ongoing design and construction projects, sixty-five million of those currently under construction, nine projects in design or bid phase, um, five projects under construction, and then sev- seven subdivisions in and nearing the construction phase. The Carriage Way, uh, we sit at around seventy-seven percent complete, with approximately seventy percent of the time has elapsed. Uh, they're forty-three days ahead of schedule. Y'all are probably seeing some of the metal girders coming up there, you're coming down Benton Road, um, they're doing good work there.
Are we still estimating, uh, April completion?
Highway seventy-one lighting improvements, phase two, um, we're looking at, uh, basically complete. I got a report right before I came in here that the issue we're having right now is, uh, SWEPCO needs to power them up. So there was a, a number of locations where they had to bring power, and I think there's several still remaining on that list. Once that's done, this project will be complete. We're showing it, you know, behind, but essentially, the way we work these projects and indicate what the metric is, is based on the amount of money that the contractors are requesting from us. So we think they're better than ninety-five percent complete here. We're just waiting on finishing that part out with the power company.
Yeah, hey, Ben, just so you know, none of the lights are working at all. They don't have power to any of them.
Well, they're, they haven't, they haven't powered them up.
Okay, I just didn't want them to be telling you one thing.
They brought service to some of those locations, but we haven't energized any of that yet. We want to do that all, hopefully, in concert. Elm Grove Ditch, this project's complete, less some punchless items, they've got some sidewalk restoration and cleanup to do there. Um, so this will probably be the last time y'all see this slide. Tinsley Park, uh, parking improvements, uh, they're a little behind based on our metric, which again is pay applications, but I haven't got another pay application since our last meeting, so I couldn't log those days in here, but based on just my observation, they're at least on schedule. Um, I know they had a little bit of disruption this week with some of the electrical conduit and things like that slowing the earthwork down, uh, but we still feel confident they're on schedule to get this project complete. It's much needed with as many events as that we have going on out in that area. Scott Street Drainage Improvements, we got the P O cut to the contractor this week. They'll begin that work as soon as materials arrive and are delivered. Um, and as you can tell, that's a much-needed project there. And then private development, that list is shrinking a little bit. Uh, Rocket Fast being, um, you know, small little stub road right off Benton Road, and then you have four subdivisions right now, Canal Place, Unit Four, the Preserve, Redwood Place, Unit Twelve, and then Cane's Landing, Unit Three. Those are the four subdivision projects that we have that we're monitoring right now. Lateral B one drainage improvements, we're still waiting on property for that. The plans are essentially complete. Uh, we're getting close on having all of the right-of-way and easement information, documents in hand. Uh, Bardo Lane and Montgomery Lane, uh, drainage improvements, we have the right-of-entry agreements completed. We're down to one parcel of property that we're not, uh, having a lot of luck in getting the owner to sign, but we're working on a way to, to design around that piece of property. So we're looking to move that thing into final design in the coming weeks. Uh, the citywide street improvement projects, that design's complete and ready for me to finalize it and get it out to bid. Uh, Golden Meadows Turn Lane there, we're still working with Civil Design Group to get that, um, coordinated through DOTD to make sure they're happy with what we're proposing down there. Uh, Barksdale Boulevard Lighting Project, uh, this is one we're waiting on the power company for. This is between Airline and Full of Love. Uh, everything's done there. We've paid them the money. We just, I think they're having some issues in getting permission from the railroad company to get those, uh, poles put in. I have reached out to, uh, AEP to get some more information on that, and I haven't, uh, gotten a response back. Barksdale, uh, the North Gate improvements, I got confirmation while we were sitting in here that they like our design. We'll be, uh, moving forward with construction on that soon. And then the city hall security upgrades are about ninety percent complete with final plans, and we're working with the Marshals Office on their list of equipment that they need to, uh, have in that space so we can ensure that the electrical requirements are met there. Any questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, Ben, I got one, the, the Golden Meadows, um, seventy-one turn lane.
Yeah.
I know this has been in the design phase for quite a while. Is it DOTD or Civil Engineering Group that's kind of dragging the fate?
It's, it's not, it's, it's a tough piece of steak. So it's really, it, and our, our bigger concern there is it's a, I'm not pushing it because it's going to require a fair amount of funding to make those improvements there, given pedestrian crossings and some of the other concerns that DOTD has. We feel like we've got a green light from DOTD to move that forward, so we're, it's, it's not in the middle of my radar, but it's, it's right there, um, close to it.
Just in, in the evenings, it is, um, it is very, very congested down there, um, everybody trying to turn in off of seventy-one traffic backing up in the, in the flow lane and everything like that.
I'll have a better report for you next month.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Angela Williamson, Finance Director, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Page one is revenue by fund. The city is currently twenty-seven percent over budget. The increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in the sales tax revenue and distributions to capital in the current year. The decrease in sales tax capital fund revenue, I'm sorry, Parkway Fund Capital Revenue is due to a timing difference between collections and distributions in July and August twenty twenty-two. The majority of the de- decrease in EMS fund revenue is due to a decrease in the ambulance alliance payment of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, combined with an increase in EMS billings of two hundred and fourteen thousand compared to August twenty twenty-two. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is currently five percent under budget. The majority of the increase in general fund expenditures is due to timing of transit payments. One monthly transit billing was paid in August twenty twenty-two, and seven monthly transit billings were paid in August twenty twenty-three. The majority of the decrease in EMS fund expenditures is due to the transfer out to capital for the ambulance alliance payment that decreased four hundred and thirty-five thousand compared to prior year. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up seventeen point eight percent compared to August twenty twenty-two because the July DMV collections were received in August instead of July in the current year. If the DMV collections had been received in July, sales tax revenue would be up eleven point two percent compared to August twenty twenty-two. Page four is the Manning Report. One auto mechanic position was removed from the Fleet Services Budget. There are eight less full-time employees than last month, and full-time employees are fifty-three under budget. There's one more part-time employee than last month, and part-time employees are five under budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for August twenty twenty-three has decreased twenty-one percent compared to August twenty twenty-two. In current year-to-date, net income has decreased eight percent from prior year and is fourteen percent under budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is up twenty percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? Uh, Mayor Chandler, do you have anything?
I'm just looking for the budget, you know?
Okay. And, uh, I would like to, uh, uh, and, uh, show some support to Mr. Wiggins, who is here from the school board, and I know Ms. Tammy was here as well, but she left, so thank y'all for attending as well. Uh, we'll take a brief five-minute break, uh, and then we'll hop into the budget, so at three fifty-five, we'll go over our twenty twenty-four budget. Hope you'll stay. Thanks.